Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Oregon City Schools Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting into order. We'll start with the College of Allegiance and afterwards we have a moment of silence. College of Allegiance, to the life of the United States of America, and to their father, which is one nation under God, and to his home, which is a school. Thank you. Mr. Bruce, we have the roll call, please.
Certainly, Mr. Shea.
President.
Mr. Mangich.
President.
Mr. Savick.
President.
And Mr. Ziski.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agendas written with the addition of the agenda items which were previously distributed to the board.
So moved. Okay.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mr. Ziski.
Yes.
Ms. Bruce, do you have any? Oh, a staff recommendation?
No, we don't have any tonight. So you're good to go to public.
Public participation.
Uh, this is my hat, Mr. Hafferman.
Yep. Come on up to the microphone here. You have essentially three minutes for the policy where you're the only speaker, so the mic should be on there. Give your name, address.
Sure.
My name is Paul Hafferman, and I'm pretty much from a lifelong resident of Oregon. Graduated from here many moons ago in seventy-two, so that dates me from State Road. And there's been a lot of talk. I just got one question right, and your answer is probably longer than my question, and that is, we hear so much about critical race theory being taught in schools as well as all kinds of things. Does the Oregon School Board support the teaching of critical race theory in the schools and itself by?
Well, I never guessed critical race theory was going to come up. I mean, he asked the board, so I don't want to take over questions from the board, if you guys want to.
I'm fine with it.
So, um, I'm gonna read something. Okay, kind of my thoughts on it, because I knew that was probably going to come up at some point. Critical race theory has been a hot topic, you know, across the nation, obviously, quite some time, and frankly, to be completely honest, never even heard of the term until this all started to kind of bubble up, you know, in the media and those types of things. So I had to research it. I had to learn about it, figure out what's the argument, you know, what it is, what it isn't. Still not sure exactly what it is and what it isn't. But based on the conversation, I'm just gonna kind of read my, kind of my thing, and I hope it helps. Because I don't think there's any way to say you're for or against it if you're not even sure what it is. At least, this is me how talking. So based on the conversations I've had, I've had quite a few with our social studies department, with our curriculum director, with our principals, those types of things. OCS does not teach CRT or have any formal lessons around CRT. All right? For the past six months, the definition of CRT continues to change and evolve with the scope of CRT question, the CRT question changing frequently. I personally continue to educate myself and explore how it relates to OCS, and that's how I view it, is like, how does this all relate to us and to our kids and to our community and to our family? So the OCS leaders and I welcome different points of views, and we look forward to exploring new questions raised to provide the best education possible for our students. The national, state, and local topics of race, diversity, inclusion, and equity are dominating discussion around the country, and for good reason. Oregon City Schools has a long history of providing solid educational programs and courses which meet the educational needs of the vast majority of our kids, preparing them for educational and working futures. Our policy on controversial topics is clear and outlines parameters for our teaching staff and students, and I'll be happy to share that with anyone. We do actually have a policy on controversial topics, kind of like CRT and kind of how it interacts, and we'd be happy to share that with the public. Our school system deeply cares about how our students, staff interact and behave with each other. There are appropriate ways to behave and interact, and there are inappropriate ways to behave and interact. We have a focus on fostering a positive culture for all our students and staff with the goal of respecting and valuing everyone's differences, which in turn allows for a positive educational experience for all. This is the big one. Curriculum is driven by the Ohio Learning Standards. To my knowledge, CRT is not in the Ohio Learning Standards. So we will continue to follow the social studies standards moving forward, as we have for many, many years. So if there are any state-level changes to these standards, we will adjust what and how we teach based on the required updates. So that's kind of a long statement saying that CRT is just a terminology for a whole bunch of other things, as I understand it, right? And when people ask me, do you endorse it or do you not endorse it? I'm like, well, what is CRT? Tell me what part of CRT you want me to endorse or not endorse, right? Because the more you talk with people, the more the message changes about what CRT is. Long story short, critical race theory in those words is not taught in Oregon City Schools, and I have no intention of putting those words into Oregon City Schools as superintendent. Now, when you look at many definitions of what CRT is by people, for example, one of them is talking about race or talking about differences in any context. Well, that's going to be hard to stop, because that's in the Ohio Social Studies Learning Standards. Does that make sense? So that's, that's kind of my take on all this. I'm not trying to dodge the question at all. It's, it's, it's nothing that the Board of Education has formally endorsed. To the point where I've not had any conversations to formally endorse or not endorse, right, the CRT, because it's really just this abstract university kind of concept at this point in time. So I feel very confident that we are not putting any of our students in any kind of awkward situation based on anything that we're teaching at this point. Certainly, in my close to twenty years here and in the last fourteen as either assistant super-super, nothing like that has ever come to my attention or my level in terms of a concern. So I, I hope that helps.
It, it does.
Okay.
It does. I think, if I may just say, probably my biggest concern is it seems like one of the facets of CRT is that one group of people, namely Caucasians, are supposed to teach, to learn that they're, they've been oppressors, they've been white supremacists, and maybe that's pushing it too far. It would, it would concern me if any, any group of people were already divisive enough. The whole country is divisive enough. Seems like it's gotten worse in the last decade or so.
I couldn't agree with you more in terms of the last thing we want to do as a school district is, is make our classrooms divisive. We're, we're trying to do the complete opposite with getting kids to work together for whatever differences they have, right? Race being the one that's talked about the most, but when you start talking about diversity, right? When you talk about diversity, you can put a whole bunch of different diverse labels, right? From economic to certainly race, but also you can go just about, all kinds of, we people have different points of view on just about every topic. That's diverse, right? Diverse thinking. Uh, you've got an agricultural group in our district, you've got a blue collar group in our district, you've got a lot of health professional, white collar kids in our district, right? All coming from, coming from different backgrounds. I think we do a fantastic job of blending all those different groups as best we can, just based on my unscientific data that we do not get many complaints that way. And I feel like we've got good cultures in all our buildings, and we're continuing to focus on that, so. So I hope that helps, Mr. Hafferman. I appreciate the question.
I just want to thank all of you for serving with the board and serving our kids. You know, this is the first meeting I've ever been doing. I'm sixty-six. I've been involved in other things in Oregon, and, but here my kids grow, grandkids grow up in different parts, but yeah, I do have a concern for our kids' education. I seem to have gotten through okay with what I learned in school, so I hope it does. I would just approve that.
Yep, and I agree. I mean, and so this, I believe the critical race theory will continue to be a topic, but I think it'll be something that we all kind of, once we understand it, that we're going to continue to, to, to understand and just, you know, work through the real issues in the schools, right? Which are kids getting along, kids behaving, kids understanding each other, and working together. So anyways, thank you.
Yeah, last thing I'd say before I leave, if I could get a copy of that controversial topic thing.
Yeah, our policy. Yeah, I don't have a hard copy with me, but if you leave your email address or text or whatever, I can get it to you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is there anybody have anything on the board?
Okay.
Great, thank you. Senator Trezor's report.
Thank you very much. The report will be inside the left column behind the superintendent's report here. Report that I'm going to review. Tonight's report is really a wrap of the fiscal year 2021. And the reports behind will support all this, but I'll just review it briefly. The district revenues as a whole came in about point-six-three percent of our estimates, which I was happy with. And we were two-point-three percent more with revenue this year than we were last year, which is very good. The two-point-three percent increase was primarily, we had increased real estate tax receipts due to utility property which kicked in. And we also had three separate BWC refunds provided by the state of Ohio of about six-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. So that was significant as well, and that was the majority. On our expense side, we were with what our estimates plus encumbrances, which is of course how I have to worry about it. We were about one-point-five percent below our estimates. That is within my goal range, because I like to be a little bit low on revenue and a little bit high on expenses. So as a whole, we were offering about two percent for the entire package. Two-point-two percent increase in actual expenditures, primarily fringes and salaries. We had a very, you know, what I would call a bad medical renewal last year. This year, we have a much better one. Actually, we had a big reduction. So that was a great deal of it. Our expenditures and purchase services, supplies, materials were lower, but I think that a lot of that's due to us frankly not being in session for, you know, we didn't use pay for the first quarter, almost half a year. So that's a lot of that. And also, we got some help from the S R monies, and we'll get that in more detail, but you can't underestimate the COVID relief fund that we received or the federal S R monies that we've been using to offset cleaning supplies, et cetera. I am asking that we have a temporary appropriation measure updated tonight. The only difference from the one we did previously is I actually have the actual cash balances and the actual incumbents as of June thirtieth. So obviously, those estimates until we get through that. But I'm also asking for the bookkeeping item, the advances that were made at the end of fiscal year 2021 will need to be reversed for this next year. Obviously, advances are temporary exchange of, you know, movement of money. All the transfers were permanent. Some things, just so you're aware of it, we're in process of something called Red Rover. It will be our new subcalling system. And we'll be, we're setting it up right now, and they'll be training very soon. What this will replace is a portion of A S O P that call or substitutes. We believe this will be an improvement. It will actually post, leave to payroll for us, so that it'll take some of that manual portion out. Also, substitutes will be able to have this as an app on their phone, so it'll be more, excuse me, more accessible, you know, to get it quicker. So we're kind of excited about that. Hopefully, we're perceiving it as an improvement. We'll find out. And it was less expensive, which is always a nice little check-in box. Beyond that, there was something else I wanted, and I forgot. I didn't put it on my court. So unless there are questions, that is my report tonight.
Any other questions?
Jane, good question. I'm looking at this, like, fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one, our revenues were better than our expenses. Like, we're not in a, I'll say, deficit spending in the past couple of years. Is that accurate?
Well, this year it's by twenty thousand dollars, but you're accurate. Yes. And last year was a little higher than that, it was over a billion. But yeah, this year, by twenty thousand dollars, we had more revenue than expenses. And I do think that's primarily that small amount we could do S R relief, because we did get quite a bit of coverage from them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Motion to approve the treasurer's report, please.
So moved.
You second.
You second.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Bruce.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
Mr. Savage.
Yes.
Mr. Ziski.
Yes.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes. At this time, we have a leadership update. Mr. Beach, our athletic director.
So just to let the board know, we're gonna, last year was an awkward year. We, prior to that, we were doing leadership updates where directors and other folks came in about every media and gave an update from their department. So we're kind of starting that back this year, and Mark had a busy year, a lot of, a lot of energy in sports and stuff, so I asked him to maybe kick us off here and just give an update on some statistics and what's going on in his world, so. So thank you, Mark, for being here.
Thank you. I would like to really focus on the upcoming year, and that's what I'm really prepared to discuss. I would like to talk about our ticket and pass information as this is a substantial change from the norm. Through COVID, we learned the value of online sales, tracking of our spectators and spectators. We learned about the value of the safety and reporting capabilities, which are far superior to what we had done in the past. The one downside to the move from the old-school method of cash sales is the convenience fee. What I can tell you is both within the track, the current conference we're in, and the one that we're going to, the N L L, all schools are doing the exact same thing that what I'm proposing here today, and that is focusing on passes. We will continue to be online and offer only online exclusively, and emphasis being on passes and significant pricing rates, discounts for people who purchase passes. So I'd like to run through that if I could, not to bore, but convenience fee information is every time we have a base price, price for varsity, and I'll speak just of varsity for the moment, just to kind of educate people. In the past, the pricing for varsity events was seven dollars per ticket. The vendor that is used throughout the state for online ticketing charges a dollar per ticket. And then there is a bank fee, processing fee on top of that. So out the door, eight fifty-five to the consumer for a single ticket. The track and the N L L have kind of handled that pricing slightly different. Both were still pushing or encouraging discounted pricing on passes so that we can minimize ticketing, our ticket charges from hometown ticketing, which is our vendor. And so we're looking at, within the track, the, the track voted to increase the price of the ticket from seven to eight dollars and embed the cost of the dollar that goes to hometown ticketing for each ticket. So effectively, it's a marketing ploy. So it's an eight-dollar ticket. We, the, the school district eat that dollar that goes to hometown, and the vendor pays the fifty-five cent bank fee. Or, excuse me, the purchaser pays the fifty-five cent bank fee. So it's a net for seven dollars for us per ticket, a dollar to the hometown ticketing, and fifty-five cents to the bank. So that's kind of how that structure is on a regular ticket-by-ticket basis, game-by-game basis. And the N L L, they left it at seven and said the consumer's going to eat everything. The end result is, in either conference, they're going to pay eight fifty-five. The patron's going to pay eight fifty-five.
So Mark, when a, when a individual buys an individual ticket, they're going to see a purchase price of eight dollars?
Yes.
And then a convenience fee of fifty-five cents.
Yes.
Versus in the N L L, they're going to see a base price of seven dollars, but then see a dollar for hometown ticketing and a fifty-five cents for.
Yes.
So it's effectively the same thing, but.
It is exactly the same.
How they market it to our.
But it's a marketing tool. I think the, on the track side of the fence, it's, 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 when you present it that way, again, eight fifty-five is eight fifty-five. It doesn't matter to, you know, it's, is what that is. But it does look better to the consumer that they're only paying the fifty-five cent fee versus a dollar fifty-five on right now.
And our community will know that it went up a dollar or feel like it went up a dollar, but bottom line is both, both track and N L L, so that's how many schools? That's sixteen schools?
Yes.
Or, or more.
Sixteen schools, but these, these surrounding suburbs and the rural suburbs are now all joining the fray because what, you know, it's one of the things that athletic departments have learned throughout the course of COVID. It's kind of a, one of those, ha, you know, this is a much more efficient thing. And we all know, we have been robbed at football games. We no longer have to concern ourselves about, you know, football being robbed or at any other point, somebody handling cash and being robbed. So that is a nice safety concern. We will have Q R codes out at the game, so if Mr. Ziski forgets to buy his ticket, he shows up at the game, he gets scanned in code and pay for it right then and there. So they don't have to buy it necessarily in advance if they're not, they're concerned about weather, but certainly have the ability to purchase your tickets on a, on a game-by-game basis. We, we are discounting pretty substantially, and if you look, we'll have multiple passes. There'll be a football reserve pass, which is the only, only pass that is sport-specific. All other passes are for the entire year.
The year, the school year.
The school year only, yes. The, the fall, winter, and spring seasons. They, they, there are, they do exclude hockey at this point. Hockey is off-site. I need to have some conversations with the treasurer to see if we want to, if we want to add that or not, and that's a just a minor point that we have never included that in our revenue in the past, so I've left that out at this point. We're looking at break evens on there. I don't really want to read that to you, but you can see the break-even points for each of the various passes for the adult, the student, the senior, the failure for, the athlete. And on the back of that page, you'll also see the employees have a, have a comp, and then the junior high we have not structured yet. That's another conversation to be had with the junior high athletic director.
So they purchase, pay all at once. It's not like a payment plan for anything throughout the year.
That's correct. It's like, yes, yes. The, the one caveat I will apply is for the athlete, their pass, their, their annual pass is twenty-five dollars. In the past, as everyone knows, we had pay-to-play, and if your first sport is a hundred-and-fifty-dollar pay-to-play fee. In the past, we were deducting, we'd say, okay, if you have a hundred-and-fifty-dollar payment, you'll get into that season or get ten, ten games free. And you're kind of defeating the purpose of the pay-to-play by discount, by giving away revenue to the games. So the conversation ensued, and he said, okay, a hundred-and-fifty dollars. Once you pay your one-fifty, then you can purchase that ticket, that pass for the entire year for twenty-five dollars.
And no other season-specific besides football. So if someone wants a basketball.
Correct, correct.
And is this similar?
And that is because, and that's because it's, that's for reserved seats only. So i- if somebody were, just wanted general admission at football, they would not be able to get a football pass for, for general admission. It's just for reserved seats.
And is this pricing similar to, is this consistent across the league?
Absolutely, and I, I was prepared for that. I thought you were going to ask me that, and I, I really did. I thought you were going to ask me that. So yes, we're definitely well within the, within the ranges. Fremont La Ross is an outlier because they do theirs by season. Everybody else does theirs for the, for the entire year, and that's the, you know, the emphasis is on these passes, these passes. It does two things. It provides cost certainty, as you know, and then it also helps transfer, I mean, it gives a discount to the consumer, but it also transfers some risk if they choose not to go to a game for because of climate weather. That's their decision, but that's those monies are already cashed, so.
And the senior, senior citizens are not a senior student?
Correct. So I will, good question. So the both leagues have gone, for various reasons, to one ticket price. There's no longer a student price per game, student price, and there's no longer a senior citizen, student price. So it's just a straight eight-dollar-and-fifty-five-cent ticket for everybody. But as you can see, the student passes are much more discounted than the adult passes, and the senior passes are obviously twenty-five dollars, so.
Last question. What's kind of the marketing plan around educating the community and teaching them how to purchase tickets or passes?
Well, there's another good question. So what we're looking to do is, A, put something in place. Secondly, we're looking to blast an email out to our parents and also to our students as well. So I will, we will begin doing that. We're still finalizing the setup with our vendor. We're nearly complete. Once that is complete, and I have the go-ahead to announce that tickets are on sale at that time, then I will start blasting out repeatedly. I will also point out that reserved ticket holders from previous years, such as Mr. Shea, will be getting a renewal notice. Those people who were Golden Eagle patrons, they will also be getting notice to update or to purchase. And with regard to the reserved seats, if, you'll, you'll have a time limit to purchase. If you don't purchase within that time, you forfeit your seats and they go back into the general pool for purchase.
In addition to, in addition to the local operations, first communications goes, is there anything being done by the two primary conferences which we're tied to that will help communicate this as a unit going forward to the, to the whole West Ohio community? Because I think it's going to be a topic, more news out there, the better.
I, that's a very good point. I don't know that that is definitely, that has been communicated yet, because I can tell you, we have a working document between all of the various schools that are going to be in the new N L L. And we are discussing, you know, we are sharing that information on the passes and whatnot. So I know that that document is not one-hundred percent complete. So I think that, you know, that obviously has not happened yet. It is a very good opportunity to be on, to get on the same page. I do know that last year, there was a lot of struggles for anybody here who went to games last year. You had a code for this place and a code for that place. And it was all over the board, and it was very frustrating consumers. And you want to make this as simple as possible and as consistent experience as we can across both. So I know that we meet, when I say we, the track A Ds will meet in the first week of August. And we will begin, you know, communicating that out very heavily then. And with the N, the N L L, we're members, but not active members yet, entirely active. So while we'll share information, I don't know exactly what they're going to be doing, and we'll be, we will meet with them. But our meetings are more along like what the new N L L is going to look like, as opposed to the current operating conditions.
You know, it's a good point, though. We, we, you know, when we were making COVID decisions, we would try to get the eight Lucas County schools kind of and use their logos as much as possible since we were unified on some things. So even if we were given the okie-dokie to use the logo and the track names on our flyers, I think at minimum that would show that it's a more of a consistent across the Northwest Ohio kind of thing than just only Oregon. I think that's where you're getting at.
Yeah, exactly, because what that does is take some of the, the.
Stress off.
Stress off of you and everyone in the district.
Agreed, and I, I think, I think that's a really good idea that you bring in, and I will, I will, I will reach out to Mr. Junga, the blade, and I think he can help exert some pressure. I know that we're going to have to have a lot of pressure, but he can be the individual that can pursue that and get that into the blade for us as well and kind of create a story. If he can create a story in that, in the blade for people to read, I think you'll start to see some more traction.
Especially if it's on, on a Sunday or a Thursday, but then also you've got, you've got the Jordan tracks, the World of Social Media. They have a ton of social media followers out there.
Yeah. Yeah, he likes to get the scoot, so. Jordan's into that, so that's good.
Any more questions?
Just a quick comment there. I do want to thank Mark, Mr. Beach, for the, the pass structure, because, you know, one of my concerns was, we have seniors that have had different types of senior passes for the past fifty years, and, and we've kind of tried to phase those out over the last many years, because just the way they were presented or purchased, and we found out at one point, passes were being sold by a third-party entity somewhere that wasn't even school-affiliated. This was years ago, I mean, years ago. And so it all needed to come to an end at some point in terms of that process. So, you know, the twenty-five dollars, I think, is a very reasonable year-long to get to every single solitary clay athletic game for the whole year. I think twenty. I think $25 is a, is a nice happy medium, you know, for, for seniors. And I think that's who we might get a little of the pushback from and the large families that have kids primarily.
Right. Well, we're helping those out with the family of four.
Exactly. And did you describe that a little bit? The, the family of four pass, can you talk about that?
Yes, the family of four pass, that's a $300 fee.
For the year.
For the year. And they're break even, it's 10 events. So five football games, think about it, five basketball games, break even. Then you have all the soccer games, you have all the volleyball games, you have both genders, uh, home games for, for boys and girls basketballs will have roughly 22 home games for.
Volleyball, wrestling.
Volleyball will have roughly 10. You know, you'll have, you'll have wrestling, you'll have lacrosse, you'll have track. Uh, so you'll, you'll more than get your money's worth if that, if you, if that's the way you want to go. 10 events, break even, not a big deal. And if they want, you know, if you've got a family of five or a family of six, even adding on, you know, a couple of student ones at $80 apiece aren't a major ordeal there either. I just, you know, I think that's where we want to head with that. I'd like to go back though to, for one second to the senior, uh, because it is a very controversial thing. I know that, uh, many people are very passionate about those, those tickets. One thing I'd like to say is that, that struggle is not, the struggle to gain some control, some measure of, uh, control, uh, and quantifying what you're giving away is a challenge for every single school, uh, high school in, not only in our conference or the NLL's conference, but every other conference, uh, every other schools having that same situation. It was one of those things that was a very nice thing to do, but when you start looking at, you know, uh, your population of people, uh, you're giving away, they were giving away tickets, uh, or giving a pass to people who were, you know, 60 or 65 in some areas, it was 55. And then they're giving, letting kids in under, under 10 free. And then, then they were letting in all their employees for free. And then there were, you know, other, and the next thing you know, your high school athletic program was being funded on the backs of the participants' parents. And now they're paying pay to play fees and then they're, it seemingly only the only ones to pay, uh, purchase tickets to, they were paying customers. So this is, this is a problem that is slowly being addressed and, uh, in the end, you know, we're at five, on the, on the underside, you're at five, under five years of age, you know, and the employees, at the employee, uh, aspect of it, you're looking at, uh, no longer the employee and their entire family, but an employee plus one, that's part of the bargaining agreement. And then, uh, you're looking at, you know, the $25 fee for the, uh, for the elderly or for the Golden Eagle. And, you know, at least you're getting some revenue, they're getting a major, you know, major save, you know, a major discount. And you're starting to get an idea, uh, once you have these folks come back every year, you have, you can quantify what you're giving away, which I think is, is extremely important. You don't know what you don't know. If, if 50% of your population of your attendee, of your attendees aren't paying, then, you know, you might want to take a look and see why you're struggling with revenue. And we have been struggling with revenue and running a, a major deficit. So it is, it's appropriate that we're looking at different pricing structures.
And it'll help, it'll give us a real accurate count of how much our attendance is actually there. We've never really been able to, until COVID, until we had to, know how many are in there.
And who's there.
And who's there, right? And who's there, correct?
Same for you too.
Absolutely. So, well, thank you. If there's any questions by the board, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who has a reason for an executive session at this time? If not, we have a line to the consent agenda, um, the motion to accept consent agenda including the addendum. Motion please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Ruth?
All right, Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mr. Zidinski?
Yeah.
First thing we have is, uh, handbooks. You know, motion to adopt following handbooks, Clay High School Athletic Handbook, Clay High School Band, Facet Junior High School, Clay 1-1 and Facet 1-1. These have been distributed to the board previously. Um, can I have a motion to accept this, please? Our handbooks for this year? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Ruth?
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Zidinski?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Um, we need a motion to approve board training, a motion to approve the attendance of board members at the 2021 OSBA conference, the capital conference, allowing for the district to cover the registration fee, lodging, meals and mileage as provided for in board policy. BHBA. Motion for this, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Ruth?
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mr. Zidinski?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we need a motion to approve transportation contracts. Um, these are basically contracts for people attending other areas and this is a state law. We don't really have a choice on whether we do this or not, but we'll need to enter into a transportation contract with the following for the 2021, 22 school year for Bridget and Gary Batch from Transportation to St. Ursula Academy in Toledo, for Charis Dankama, 537 Bridgewater, Oregon, Transportation to St. Francis de Sales, and Trisa Mazel, 3439 Country Farms, Oregon, Transportation to St. Francis de Sales High School. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. With the new funding that's coming up through the state, will this become a moot issue at subsequent board meetings with, um, we're still going to have to vote on it going forward even on the day plan?
Yeah. The, the amount we pay those folks is, it will be going up, uh, in lieu of transportation, but we still have to be approving them, uh, as, as needed, I guess, as they, now the timelines are changing, so we might be doing it earlier.
Okay.
You know, than, than now even, believe it or not, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're still going to be providing transportation to private schools or payment in lieu of.
Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Zidinski?
Yeah.
And Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Disposal of materials, the items approved for disposal at the June 15th board meeting have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Next is superintendent's report, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Appreciate everything. I'd just like to, to, I guess, open my report and welcome, uh, Mr. Savage, uh, back to our Board of Education. He was on it quite a few years ago, but, uh, was excited that he was appointed back onto it. So we certainly want to welcome you. You're an experienced, obviously, on board. You, you get it, you know how to do it, but, uh, uh, we're glad you're here. Your wisdom and your, your background is just going to be tremendous for me and for the board and our district. So we appreciate you being here and congratulations on that. I was asked some questions about the start of the school year and I'm just going to take a quick minute or two to make sure that, that the board understands our, kind of our different, little bit different start of the school year than we've done in the past. Typically in the past, we've had a work day for teachers, a main service day, kids leave school. So just kind of, that's how it was. But we're, we're working on a little bit more of a, um, step into model, a, a go a little bit slower to go faster model and start to build relationships with kids and give kids a little bit more of an orientation to schools than maybe we've done in the past. So I'm just going to quickly go through that, that first week of school. And if I'm wrong, Ms. Coy, please tell me if I'm wrong, uh, but I think I'm right. So the first day is a Friday, August 13th, and our staff has a work day. So that, that happens, the staff's just in their classrooms, they're working, um, individually in their rooms. On that following Monday though, is our staff, what I call opening day. That's where we bring the entire staff, at least all the teaching staff and some of the classified staff together, either at Facet or at Clay. And, uh, we have in-service in the morning here with everybody. I tend to lead that. We have a lot of different pieces to that. And then in the afternoon, the principals have meetings. You are all invited that day, if you're available, to come at 8:00 in the morning, um, to just be introduced and, and, uh, just help kick off the day. You certainly don't have to spend the whole day and you certainly don't have to attend. But I wanted to make sure you were invited to come to that. Now, I'm, I'm still not sure if it's going to be Clay or Facet. We, we go back and forth with air conditioning, no air conditioning. And then parking's a problem at Facet, but it's not here. So we all, we try to weigh everything and then I just have to make a decision. Does it look like it's going to be really hot? And we'll go by my facet.
Is that the day that we used to have the employee health fare stuff?
That's typically, that's the May day, right?
Yeah.
Is that the one you talk about? We usually do that again here and we do want to bring that back this year, or at least we talked about bringing that back this year in, in the spring. Uh, we have, we did it for two years straight and then we didn't do it for the last probably two springs and then we hope to do it. Essentially what Mr. Zidinski's referring to is we just bring in all kinds of vendors to help support our staff. You know, we've had everything from hospitals and different pieces of the hospitals and mental health counselors and some fun things. And we've had a bunch of puppies come into a room and you just pet puppies for a few minutes and, you know, just anything that's kind of a wellness day. So we're going to bring that back. Anyways, back to the first.
You know, for, so it's come back like to get the date, date out there, so just like for we can, we've got like three more, more vans that, you know, we are putting out. I think we added a new one this year.
Uh, remind me here, I want to know about this.
Okay.
Cause we have the date on calendar, I can give you the date.
It's May 3rd.
Oh, there you go, May 3rd.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, so, so that Monday, August 16th, you are certainly invited. Um, on Tuesday, August 17th, the whole staff's going to be doing, uh, a focus three training, which, you know, many of you have heard, but maybe Dan and Paul haven't heard as much about, but it's very, it's a training specifically on culture, it's, you know, and, and how to better yourself and how to interact with people. And it's just, it's this whole curriculum that I so deeply believe in. We're, we're, it's a very structured curriculum. Tim Knight, Tim Kite, who worked with Ohio State Football, um, started the, the program 40 years ago. We had him speak to our staff many times, so we're actually, but then right before we were going to start this whole training, COVID hit and we had to delay it a year and a half. So all our staff will be, will be focused on focus three training. So this is when parents and community, uh, start to have to pay attention. So on Wednesday, all right, there's no students anywhere in the district, but there are things happening in all the schools, all right? So at, at the elementary level, the rest of that week is going to be doing appointments with individual families, one at a time. So each teacher will be doing individual appointments with their families to get, to know them better, to get to know their students better, and we're going to spend some quality time. I mean, it's not a lot of time per kid, but it's at least quality time with each and every kid all week long. So that's what the elementaries are doing, okay? So they won't be coming to school, the elementaries, till the following Monday, 23rd. All right, everybody get that? All right. On Thursday, then, is when we start to the step up model. So on Thursday, uh, we just talked about the elementary. Eisenhower will have sixth grade in their school, but no fifth grade. And we've been doing this now for quite a few years. Facet will have eighth grade come to school, but not seventh grade. All right? And Clay are going to continue, they have two days of Chromebook distribution, Chromebook distributions, pictures and all the little things they do. So they have two days, both Wednesday and Thursday.
A hotel with a lot of kids keeping the Chromebook, is that a, a required school day?
It's not ever, it is not a required school day for Clay.
Okay.
Correct. This is, Clay's the only bit, because of that, because of that, which was a late after calendar decision kind of thing, that kind of, so it'll probably look a little different next year, but we have what we have now at this point. Uh, then on Friday, uh, Eisenhower flips grade levels, fifth grade comes in, not sixth grade, seventh grade comes in, not eighth grade. And for the first time in a long time, uh, Mr. Jersey's going to host a full day ninth grade orientation. We haven't had that in a long time. He's very excited about that. So then on Monday, everybody starts. So everybody kind of understand that then? I mean, as best we can, it's, it's a little bit convoluted, but, uh, you know, we usually have a few that show up maybe on the wrong day, but we work through that and make it happen. So I just want to make sure the board understood kind of how our opening day was.
Now, I just wanted to express the gratitude and that, I know in the past, I put some of Mr. Kennedy, we had things way a week before and it kind of shortened us, people, parents, optional, but not optional. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Zidinski certainly got us thinking about the idea of how quick summer comes, right, at early. And there were some other, you know, we do have some flexibility with hours that we didn't have maybe many years ago. And so anyways, we, we found how valuable, certainly during COVID, with this connection with parents is and, uh, certainly giving kids a head start one grade level at a time is vital. Okay, just a couple of quick updates that are exciting for the community. One is I got a call from, uh, Bo Miller. He's a trustee in Jerusalem Township, if you don't know him. Great guy, he's been working with us for a long time. Jerusalem Township and, uh, our schools have been talking probably now for almost two and a half years, maybe, maybe even longer, about turning that John Kennedy Park into a wetlands that could be utilized primarily by our clay science and ag programs here at Clay High School. Uh, Jerusalem also, Jerusalem Elementary Kids that, that could access it because they're so close. So anyways, this was a, a pet project that, that Mr. Miller really was, you know, grabbed a hold of and he's been working hard to, to get a grant. He got that grant. That grant is complete. Uh, you guys will be getting a invitation to a ground graping ceremony, I believe, in around the first week of August. I don't know when, Bo didn't know at that time when, but, uh, our commitment to use it essentially is to help out, uh, periodically with some of the maintenance and grass cutting out there. That we'll just take one of our millers down there and kind of bowl around it. Uh, so not a big commitment, minor commitment, really as a partnership, none, no funding from our end. It's not costing us anything and our kids will benefit. So it was a, it was a win-win-win for everybody. So, so that's, that's something that we're excited about. And if any of you are pickleball players, we are working with the recreation department to paint two pickleball courts in the back of Facet, uh, on the Facet tennis courts. So apparently there's a, there's a need, a lot of requests for pickleball, uh, courts. So I haven't played it myself, but it's a mini, kind of a mini tennis, kind of a mini, you know, tennis kind of thing. And, uh, so that's going to start. It's a, again, the rep is, it's really a rep program, just utilizing our facilities, but we're going to allow them to repaint the courts. They'll have a lockbox out there that I guess puts the nets in there and, you know, and paddles and things that whoever has the key or the code will be able to go play pickleball. So maybe we'll do a board pickleball tournament one day. I don't know, we'll see. Break it in. Any questions on that? And I just want to briefly address, uh, COVID protocols. You see that in the news all the time now, what's going to happen in the fall? Everyone's wondering what's happening in the fall. Guidance is coming from every angle, like it has been for the last two years. Uh, but bottom line is, and I'll just kind of read this, right now, today, the only known mandate is the requirement for, uh, drivers and students to wear masks on school buses. And that really just became known to us in the last two weeks. So, so it's a mandate, it's a health order, a federal mandate, it's not a local one, it's not even a state one. So we will honor that, uh, at the start of school year. We have to. It's a mandate, uh, bus drivers and, and kids with masks. So we'll have masks. I know it's, it's, it's going to be difficult, but we're going to, you know, make it work and, and we'll have masks available for kids to forget it. And, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to use common sense with that. That's all I'm going to say. We're going to use common sense and, uh, and follow the mandate. Uh, there are plenty of recommendations from the CDC and others, but there's limited mandates, right? The only one I'm aware of right now is what I just described.[1688.28] The only one I'm aware of right now is what I just described. So as of now, my intention is to move forward with the continuation of our disinfecting, our cleaning, our hand sanitizer, all the things that we do in our schools. Uh, we will have students dis system tells, uh, whenever possible, but frankly, that becomes very tough to monitor on a day-to-day-to-day basis. The recommendation is three feet. Uh, we will certainly aspire to get there. Our classrooms, you know, will be spread out, those types of things. Uh, but again, it's a recommendation, it's not a mandate like it was last year. Uh, masks will be optional in classrooms and school facilities for students, staff, and volunteers. I plan to open the buildings as we typically do for meetings and visitors. This summer's already been a very typical summer, the way we've handled things. People have used facilities, come in, we've had camps, all kinds of things throughout the district. Uh, we've had summer school and, and, uh, at Coy, at Clay, and at Facet, uh, all kind of run in a typical fashion. So, uh, but I do absolutely wanna say, of course, any formal mandate by our local health director or the state of Ohio, which both have come out publicly and said there will not be a mask, they don't anticipate a mask mandate. The governor has set it, so has Eric, uh, Zagowski, if I say that right, uh, with the Lucas County Health Department. We just met with him on a Zoom call last week. So, so I feel good about where we're at. Our community's been great. I mean, we haven't had any issues, uh, over the summer. Um, everyone seems to be healthy for the most part, that, that I'm aware of. There's still a little bit of uncertainty as to what we will have to do related to tracing kids, contact tracing. We're not sure. Health Department's not sure if they're gonna have a mandate for contact tracing. Frankly, that's the hardest part of the whole thing, is keeping track of who has what and when, and we don't know who's been, you know, who's received vaccinated, who has it. You can't ask them. So what do you do? You know, it's this big circle of confusion at times. The bottom line is, we're gonna educate kids, we're gonna work hard so they have the best experience they possibly can next year with as few mandates as possible. At least that's where I wanna go. So any comments, questions, concerns that the board has? This week, I'll have a formal letter put out to, to the community, to our parents, to everybody by Friday. Uh, there, you're gonna see it roll out with all the Lucas County school districts this week. Perrysburg had an announcement last night, had a meeting. Iowa Hills has a meeting tonight, we have a meeting tonight. Anthony Wayne's put one out tomorrow. We're all gonna be good, and it's all gonna say the same thing. You know, we're gonna follow the mandates, but if it's not a mandate, we're gonna move forward like we have in the past. So, so that's my report, Mr. Shay, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Berry? Okay. Uh, we have, uh, some old business to take care of here. It's our final reading for policies. Um, I'll have to read them and then we'll ask for a motion without them. ACR Discrimination Complaint Procedure, IGCK Blended Learning, AC Non-Discrimination, DH Bonded Employees and Offices, EFB Food Services Management Fee and Reduced Price Food Services, IGCB Innovative Education Programs, IGE Adult Education Programs. And these letters are all spaces in, in the board policy that we're replacing. Uh, most of these are by state or federal guidelines, um, which we have to do. They're recommending these terms were changed. So can I have a motion for this, please?
So moved. Second.